Word please come to order for the meeting of November the 2nd, 2022. Would the clerk please read the roll?
Dibella.
Yes.
Adel.
Here.
Avedeja.
Here.
Bazano.
Here.
Buell.
Here.
Curry.
Here.
Desai.
Here.
Drake.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Gardo.
Here.
Gentile.
Here.
Healy. Hoffman.
Here.
Hoheb.
Here.
Holloway.
Here.
LaChance.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Magnin.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Mandick.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
Patel.
Poopin.
Commissioner Patel is on the WebEx. Potowski. Salemmy.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Vassino. Wolf.
Here.
Carrier. We have a quorum.
Okay. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Could, go ahead, John. Why don't you?
We have several new commissioners here tonight. Commissioners Bazano, Desai, and Gail. Could you guys please come forward and I'll swear you in. All right. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or still firmly will faithfully uphold according to law your duties as a Commissioner of the Metropolitan District of Hartford County? Congratulations.
For the record, we have two commissioners that have been reappointed for two more years. They don't need to be sworn in, however. Commissioner Gentile and Commissioner Salemmy from East Hartford. Congratulations. Your town councils have extended. Approval of the minutes of October the 3rd, 2022. Is there a motion to adopt? It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additions or deletions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Item six, public comments relative to agenda items.
I support the changes in the bylaws and the form that's created to eliminate problems about conflicts of interest. I submitted some written comments, and I'm happy to say that at the last government meeting, those questions and concerns were addressed, and I greatly appreciate that. Just add that I believe the chairperson of the district board has a unique position of influence, and assets should be held to the highest standard. There should not be any appearance of a conflict for the public to have confidence in the board. Taking on the position of Commissioner is an important commitment. I am grateful for your work and the time commitments involved for no pay. I would like the MDC board to have a sterling reputation for transparency. I think your customers will be grateful for strict ethical standards that are enforced. Thank you.
No further comments. Item seven, report from the district chairperson. There's none tonight. I'll, next meeting, I'm going to have a report on the meeting I went to this last two days up in New Hampshire relative to several questions, PFAS and several other things that we will discuss. Do we have the 14th, the meeting on the 14th?
We do. Yes.
And we will have a meeting on the 14th for the Committee on Technology. I will make comments at that meeting, too. So we'll follow, I'll follow through at the next board meeting. Report from the Chief Executive Officer. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up with the chairman's comments on the Technology Committee. Staff is trying to coordinate that on a Monday, the 14th. We're shooting for 11 o'clock. Is that what we're shooting for? So it's going to be a little bit of a challenge. It is a public meeting. I'm not sure if we queried the commissioners yet, but it will be a public meeting, but the first part of the committee meeting is actually a tour of the incinerators. So it's a little bit of a challenge. You know, everyone's welcome, but we're going to most likely have the tour at the facility at 240 Brainard, and then the meeting will actually be held at 231, which is across the street, our new facility there on Brainard Road. So we'll work out the details.
The Rossi?
Yes, the Rossi building, correct.
That's right across the street.
Right across the street.
Existing facility.
But we'll submit to everyone, make sure that everyone is available to come, and if there is not a quorum, we'd still like to hold at least a tour.
I think we can get three commissioners there.
Yeah, so we will, the goal is to have the tour. The tour is part of the meeting, correct, John? So it's a public tour, and if the public would like to attend, that's fine. There is some stairs involved. We do have an elevator in the facility, but there are some stairs that you have to walk up through to get through the facility. But the meeting, we will follow through and discuss the tour at 231. So if anyone could not attend, they'll be able to listen to what, you know, what was talked about and seen on the tour. With that, I'd just like to mention, we've been talking for a number of months now regarding a 2003 management study that was done for the MDC. The chairman, Dibella, chairman of PPI, Commissioner Taylor, have asked that we present this 2003 report to the full board. So we have been working, I've got 160 pages here, that we're going to present a summary. I will present a summary in December board meeting regarding what the 21 recommendations were in 2003, how they apply to the MDC, how they don't apply to the MDC, and what we have done since 2003. Very short summary, will be part of the agenda, not part of my comments, so it'll be part of the agenda. I'm going to take 15 to 20 minutes to present that. Then the chairman, through discussions with him, because it's such a large document, we're going to set up meetings, and we did this back in 2010 and '12, where we'll actually have a meeting here. We'll go by department and show the commissioners what the plan identified in 2003 and what the MDC has done since. But we'll do that by, so we'll have multiple, probably at least five, maybe seven, meetings over the course of December and January, because it's so much information. To try and provide it to you in one meeting will be overwhelming for not just yourselves, but for staff. So we will break those up into smaller meetings. We'll have those meetings here. We'll pick a time that everyone can make those meetings, and we'll be working on that over the course of the next month.
Can I just, briefly? That body of work is from 2001, 2003?
Yeah, the report was done in '03.
Forward. And ultimately, what it was, was we went out to an outside consultant, and we had a management study done, and this is a follow-up to that. And of course, one of the issues here is that it's been almost 20, it's more than 20 years that we've, less than, a year less, 19 years, that we have had brought someone outside to look at it. This is the look from the inside on what we've done over that period of time to be consistent with the management study that we did in 2003. And I had asked that we also now look, going outside, to have eyes from the outside, look at what we have done and where we are, just for, I think it's in the best interest of any corporation to go out and get outside eyes. But what Scott's going to do is bring everybody up to date on what we did, how we did it, and why we did it, and then we'll talk about a management study, an additional one, for 2023. So that's where the issue will come from. Any questions? Go ahead, Scott. I don't want to interrupt you.
Yes, no, no problem. I just got a few items I'm going to skim through real quick. We had our second town budget workshop meeting on October 27th. It's tough for the towns, they didn't have much to say after a 0% increase, and we reduced our water rate by 29 cents. So it was a very short meeting, but they were very thankful, and a lot of hard work by all of our staff, not just our finance staff, but remember, these rates don't go down by themselves. It's a matter of managing the work, managing the efficiency of the organization to make sure that we're doing more with less. So they were very happy, and we do have a budget Board of Finance meeting on November 9th, which is the next meeting. We'll be talking through some of those issues. Lynbrook, I would say, Commissioner Bush, you're happy? Lynbrook is finally complete, and it's been a long Lynbrook. As you know, 2018, we had a major sewer collapse because of a new liner technology that we used, and we spent a long time addressing that, and we just finished restoration and replacement of the liner and the rest of the street. So it's been a very patient community, and we appreciate all of that. In terms of, I'm going to have Rita Kelly, who is our affirmative action officer, she's going to present as part of the management plan, but she's also going to present a little highlight as to the affirmative action plan that was submitted in September. But something we'll talk about in the management plan that's really important to us, we talk about succession planning all the time. And what does that mean? What does that mean to me, Scott Jellison? We have hired 24 new employees in 2022. We've promoted 47, so 47 internal employees have been promoted. If you, succession planning means that you have hired employees that are promotable, and if you hire people that are promotable, then you're able to succession, right? If you hire people who can't, can't, and aren't promotable, you wind up stagnating the organization. And that's why the MDC has been so successful in the last number of years, reducing the number of employees by, you know, thanks to PPI, thanks to this board approving the multitasking job descriptions that have been approved over the years. So one, a couple more things I just want to mention before we, I turn it over, and I'm just reading off of my monthly reports. Some of the new commissioners may or may not know, myself and my staff produce a monthly report, which is extremely detailed on just about everything we do here, so you'll be getting copies of those on a monthly basis. We are, believe it or not, starting our, in December, we'll be starting up with our audit process again. Clifton Larson will be here and just start the process of starting the audit throughout the spring. Really important, and I've mentioned this at the finest meetings, this year's shut-off season was post-COVID. We hadn't shut off in two years, almost three years, and we, through the shut-off notices, which we've discussed at length at the Water Bureau, we sent out 9, 9,600 notices, and in those notices, we sent out, we received $4 million and change just by sending out the notice. And then in actually engaging less than 1,000 customers, 964 customers, we were actually able to set up payment plans, and we received another to date, 1.5 million. So Kelly and her staff, the collections attorneys, just outstanding work regarding, you know, reaching out to our customers. I'm going to, fourth quarter Avalorum, we received our payments, we're good, everybody's, we're very happy of that. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm done.
Are there any questions? Wow. That's.
I know. No, please.
There are no questions. Okay. A report from the district co, I'm sorry, Commissioner Salemmy.
Just to comment on what Scott just talked about, so the, this is a sort of, close to the endpoint, the culmination of the, of a capital improvement project where we changed all the meters in the MDC. We started it in 1989, I think, or 90, with the AMR, the original AMRs.
Changed technology.
And weren't able to get those into every home, and we weren't able to use those after a while because they were directly connected to your landline phones and not digital, but as time went by, we changed the devices. But there was a great reduction, I just mentioned this to the East Hartford Town Council, but as, you know, a capital improvement project that's actually reduced costs for the MDC over time, because we don't have a staff of meter readers anymore. We had a staff of meter readers, which is considerable-sized staff at the time, before we did that. So what I do have for a question, though, for Scott, is so how many accounts are left that don't have remote readers in them? We got that down to, I think, a few thousand at one point. Where are we getting to it now? Because with these shut-offs, I assume that we've, that part of turning it back on involved us getting into the residence or commercial building or whatever, and actually replacing the old meters with the remote readers, so that, how many accounts are left where that we can't read?
Thank you, Commissioner Scott Jellison. So we had two shut-off notices that went out this year for different reasons. One was, and we brought this to Water Bureau and the board, is we had customers that were current with their bill, they just wouldn't let us in to change out the meter, to change out the RF. And then we had the other customers that were of non-payment, which is traditional. So when, in 2006, to your point, 2008, we actually started the new AMR program, and as you mentioned, AMR was, used to be hardwired with your telephone wire in your home, and then the technology changed, it went to wireless, battery-operated, and the technology changes every day. In 2008, we had 40,000, 40 out of 102,000, at the time, we had probably 110,000, but 40,000, almost half of our meters, were estimated bills because of some reason. We now have less than 1,000 of those, of those 40,000 are still left to be upgraded with a new AMR device.
Well, and I imagine that, because I know there's questions about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
How would you?
Mr. Patel.
Yes, Commissioner.
Excuse me, Commissioner Patel.
Commissioner Salemmy is, has the floor. I'll recognize you as soon as he's through.
So the point was that at some point during the course of the last 30 years or so, we had, you know, tremendous number of estimated bills, and projections of revenues for the Water Bureau were like rolling the dice at some point. And also, you know, for projections of water use or consumption, now that those meters in each individual property are tied to our meters in the main system, we can, we have the ability to find leaks, that we can find leaks in the system better because we can do these measurements, and the numbers that we get back are reliable. So I guess my point was saying is that as a capital improvement project that was done to actually improve our ability to manage the delivery of the water, it's been successful. It took some time to get there, and I will say that I got a couple of phone calls from some of the people that you sent, you know, shut-off notices to say, hey, I always pay my bill, why are they shutting off my water? And it was basically what you said, because you never let us in to change the meter, you know? So I think the program is successful, and I want to, you know, say that I hope the future that water revenue projections and consumption projections are all assisted by, you know, getting us down to less than 1,000, you know, accounts with the old meters that don't report out. So thanks, Scott. I just want to let you know that I heard from some.
I'm sure you all did.
Our staff handled it very well, though. I think they did handle it very well.
Yes, they did.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes. What efforts are we making currently to connect all those 4,000 remaining in operation as we are proceeding?
Scott?
What is preventing us from moving forward as passengers?
What are we doing with them? Commissioner, I'm sorry, Scott?
Yeah, Commissioner, I think I understand your question. So that's part of the shut-off process? So traditionally, we have never shut, as long as someone's current with the bill, we have never shut them off, even though our ordinances allowed us to do that. So we didn't want to, during the 40,000, starting in 2008, we didn't want to scare customers away from the program. So we left that group of individuals alone until now. We brought that issue to the Water Bureau last year, and I know Commissioner Mandick had a number of questions regarding the letters and how the letters were written, to make sure that we were thoughtful and to our customers. So we are working with those individuals like we have, and we will utilize the shut-off process notice to encourage those remaining customers to allow us into the home and to disconnect the meter. A lot of our new policies are we're putting a meter out on the street, right at the curb, so we don't have these issues in the future. A lot of the water utilities have done that, and so that makes it easier for us to access our equipment. So we're, that's our policy. We're installing the new meters on the outside of the building at the curb stop, at the property line, and we're just working through those remaining customers, Commissioner.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Torres.
It's great to hear that, you know, we have a workforce that has the potential to do other things and allow us to use them in different capacities, and that we allow for the opportunity for promotion. But by the same token, do we provide, or how do we provide for those folks that are at the entry level or the lower-level skills to be able to gain those skills so that they can be promoted? Do we have in-house opportunities of training to do that?
Scott Jellison, Commissioner, yes, we have implemented a number of training programs in our, I'll give you an example. If you, if you're in the repair department, which is the water sewer department, so the staff that's fixing water mains and sewer collapses in the streets, the new multitasking job description requires you to have a CDL as you enter the MDC. Prior to, you have to have a CDL. So that allows the succession planning. What happened prior to the CDL requirement was we would have individuals that would come into the MDC, and they would not be able to achieve their CDL, and at the time, we were training our staff in the field, in the yard, to get their CDL. Now, as you know, Commissioner, we can't do that anymore. By federal law, we have to, people have to get their CDL through a registered licensed training program, so we're not allowed as an employer to train our own individuals. But as they come in, they have their CDL, and all of the jobs in succession require that CDL until you get to a supervisor. We have other positions that require, for wastewater, drinking water treatment, we have training for those individuals, they have two years to get their license at, you know, certification level one, and then there's all kinds of training that we provide to those individuals to make sure that they can progress. We want our employees to progress, because if they don't progress, I've used this analogy before, but, you know, I, when I first got here in 2006, we had, our entry-level job was called a pipe joiner, and that was the lowest person on the totem pole in the repair department, and we had people that were 50 years old in that position, because nobody, they were stagnating in the company because they didn't have their CDL, they couldn't get their CDL for whatever reason, and it stagnated the ability for the MDC to bring in new people behind them. And just talking about today, you know, 24 new employees coming through the door. How we were able to make that room for those 24 employees was by promoting people from within, and it provides that succession planning. So we, we've talked a lot about this offline, and I've talked about this with Commissioner Lewis. We're working with the unions to try and develop a program to, CDL is a big thing for us, it's a big thing for the state. We're trying to find a program that we can recruit young people from our communities to be qualified to apply for these jobs.
Further questions? Scott, just one issue. Our summer, our summer program that we run, an interns program, how many people came out, how many of these 24 employees came out of that program? Because one of the benefits of a summer program was to bring as many young people into this as Scott has pointed out. I was just wondering, what's the correlation between the 24 employed and how many came out of that program that you were running?
So we do, as the chairman mentioned, we have been doing, really for COVID messed things up for everyone for a couple of years, but we started, and I think this will be the fifth year that we've executed this past summer, we developed a learn-to-earn program, which was really meant for high school kids that were not college-bound. We're looking, we're looking to recruit young people from our community, from eight-member towns. Commissioner Taylor was involved in this. We had a curriculum that was developed in Bloomfield, trying to get young people to get their certifications for a water treatment operator's license. And so that learn-to-earn program is a five-week program. We bring in about 10 to 13 kids a year. The goal is, you have to be at least a junior. In order to take the test for the state DPH, you have to be a senior. So we're trying to utilize that program to bring in young people and give them an opportunity to apply for our water treatment operator positions. The standard is set by the state, stepped by DPH on the water side and DEEP on the sewer side. Unfortunately, we haven't been very successful in the learn-to-earn program as we've, in terms of hiring from that program. We did, however, back in the day with the laborers' union, we did hire through a program that we developed with the laborers' union, MDC staff through that program. We also hire about 30 college kids a year as a summer intern program. I just met with the University of Hartford yesterday, and they're developing a construction management program, which they're very interested in. I'm sitting on their advisory board, and they're very interested in sending their kids to our intern program, and we've hired more kids from that program than the learn-to-earn. Our challenge for the MDC is to hire kids from the high school level into the trades. the MDC is to hire kids from, from the high school level into the, the trades, into the drinking water, wastewater and our operation positions. And I'm working with Rita Kelly, our affirmative action officer, to, 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 to achieve our goals there. But it's, it's a challenge. The industry unfortunately is, as we say, electricians, plumbers, a lot of the young people do not want to go into the trades. It's a challenge for all of us. A lot of the wastewater and drinking water industry, like us, the people are retiring, the, the, the staff are retiring and there's no one backfilling them. And that's what the learn to earn program was, was meant to do. We are the only ones probably in, in, in New England that, that has this learn to earn program and probably around the, the country. It's a, we've, we've talked about it through, through all of our different trades organizations and, but we're trying, but we're not, we haven't been successful.
Further questions?
District counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Stone, district counsel. Just a couple of things. The first is the, as you know, we had a longstanding, rather lengthy contentious litigation between the MDC and the Marriott down on Columbus Boulevard in Hartford. We had lost the contractual dispute at the trial level. We, the judge at the trial court level had ordered us to release an assessment lien because in addition to the contractual claim, we made an, you made an assessment on the property, that the, the assessment was the subject of a public hearing. The owners of the property appeared at that public hearing on the assessment. The assessment was issued through the Board, Bureau of Public Works and through this board and there was no appeal taken from that assessment. Fast forward, it's been about two years since that assessment was put into place. The trial court ruled not only against us on the contract claim, but also ordered us to release the assessment lien. We appealed that part of his order that called for us to release the assessment lien. And we appealed that to the appellate court. And in a decision issued approximately 10 days ago by Judge Prescott, on a three panel, unanimous decision by three members of the appellate court, the court ruled in our favor. They overturned Judge Schuman's decision to ordering us to release the lien and went further to state that our assessment lien was valid, that it was, the time to appeal had expired and that is, it is in full force and effect. So it was a, a good win for, for us. The deep lawsuit relative to the landfill, as you know, has been prepared. It is, will be filed next week. I'll keep you posted on the response from the state on that. On the Colebrook declaratory judgment action, which we filed, as I think I informed you at the last meeting, but just to confirm, there's a hearing set for June, January 6th, a 5th and 6th of, of next year. So that's moving along. A decision will be due on that, on or before February 5th, 2023. On the tunnel claim, we have filed a state suit, a suit in state court relative to the DRB process and supporting our claim that a DRB panel has in fact been composed of two original members and one substitute member and that any claims by the, our adversary, KOJV, the tunnel contractor, that the DRB is now effectively defunct are unsupportable. That claim has been filed with the state court. I'll keep you posted on that and on how that proceeds. There is also a pending federal court claim, which we're making certain pleading motions to address that suit. We think that's somewhat premature in that we have the DRB process, which has not been finalized yet. So that federal court case is pending and we're defending that. And then finally, we had some good news on the collection front. In addition to the references that Scott made in terms of your, the in-house collection staff, the collection attorneys that we hire outside and, and my staff who works particularly Steve and John on these collection issues, we just got a stipulated judgment on the muse. As you know, the muse in Hartford has had a rather sporadic history for one reason or another. It's just the way it is in terms of payment, but they are now going to pay us in full 100 cents on the dollar on their outstanding water bill. It'll be a payment plan over time, but it'll be paid within the time that we usually expect these installment plans to, to pay off the debt and that's two years. So in addition to the payment towards the debt, they have to maintain a current status on their ongoing water bills. So that was just under $100,000 that we realized on that. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Chris, is that jurisdictional, the, on the tunnel? Are you, is that jurisdictional relative to state and federal? They filed in federal, didn't they?
They filed in federal court. They filed on the underlying claim, on the merits of, of the underlying claim. We have, we by contract had indicated that the jurisdiction for settlement of claims like this is with state court, at least as it relates to the formation and continuation of the dispute resolution board. As you recall, we were engaged and we're still engaged in active negotiations to try, try to resolve that matter. But about a month ago, I brought to you a, a proposition and indicated that while you did not have to act because it was nothing against or in the MDC's interest, I did indicate to you that at the suggestion of KOJV, they withdrew their, what was a pending state court claim. We had filed a counterclaim and we agreed to withdraw our counterclaim, both being done without prejudice. And the, at least the claim from KOJV was that the withdrawal was done so that the cloud of litigation wouldn't be hanging over the negotiators, that the technical people could do their job and analyze the technical deficiencies or merit of, of the claim. It, what a difference a day makes because shortly thereafter, after we withdrew without prejudice, they withdrew without prejudice, they filed the federal lawsuit on the merits and claiming ironically that the DRB process is broken. Well, it's only broken because in part they withdrew their lawsuit where they had asked for a declaratory judgment from the court to reinstate the DRB process. We filed a counterclaim in that case, which was withdrawn without prejudice, claiming that we have a DRB. We have a DRB made up of two original members and a third member that was on both lists when we went to replace a member that could no longer serve. In, in our opinion, and it's supported by the contract, that once you have a, a match on a list, that person becomes the third member. They disagreed. We were in state court. We filed a counterclaim on our position. They, and then the rest is history. They brought the federal suit. We have in effect filed a, a principal claim in the state court, which mirrors to some extent the counterclaim, but adds additional counts relative to what we consider the bad faith actions of KOJV in withdrawing a lawsuit without prejudice on some pretext that they want to remove this cloud over the negotiators. And in fact, that was not the reason. So we think that we want to make the court aware of, of the shenanigans that's going, that are going on. So all that bad news is we're still negotiating and hopefully we'll come back with you, to you relatively soon, you know, within certainly months, not years, with the, with the settlement that is fair to everybody. But that's, that's to be seen.
That's a negotiation on the?
Merits of the thing.
Merits of the thing.
Correct.
Have they, have they been meeting on that, Chris?
They have been meeting it. They, they were meeting on that before this legal shenanigans, for lack of a better term. But they have not met because of schedule, but not because they're not willing to meet.
Not because they're not willing.
Not because they're not willing to meet. And in fact, our, our representative who's, who's, who's charged with administering and scheduling these meetings, on the technical side in particular, has indicated that they have once again expressed a willingness to meet. We have offered that same expression to them and we anticipate that within the next few weeks, there will be another meeting, that technical meeting that was canceled for unrelated reasons.
October meeting, wasn't it?
Right. But that, we'll have that and hopefully move things along that way. That's the answer to this case, is to try to resolve it.
Commissioner Salimi?
This is for our counsel, Stone. So Chris, you said earlier that we're moving forward with our, I think you said lawsuit with, with deep over the landfill. Is that, did I hear that right? Say, there's a little?
That's, that's correct. And you, you know, there's, there's three claims. There's two state claims, commissioner claims. This is the first one that we got released by the claims commissioner to sue. So that's, that's number one. The second is, relates to the tiered rate for the landfill. That is pending before the claims commissioner and that is ripe to go to that same accelerated process that we were successful on the first with. That's the claim number two. And claim number three relates to the Buckingham Garage, unrelated to the landfill.
That was my question. So that is a separate, that's actually a separate claim, even though they didn't treat it that way. But we're, we're treating it as a separate claim.
We're, we're treating it separately for, and, and, in addition to obviously the factual differences in terms of where it is and what they're discharging.
The law is the same.
This is one where, where they had actually paid the proper fee for a number of years. And then the, the contractor, which was, I think is Gilbain Construction, were paying it on behalf of the state. They finished the job. The state continued to pay for a few months and then decided that the cost was too high. They haven't stopped discharging into our system. It's just the cost was too high. So that's the nature of that claim.
Further questions? And the Army Corps is what, that's a summary judgment? That's?
That's the declaratory judgment, January 5th, and if we need it, January 6th, 2023.
Okay. Further questions? Okay. Thank you, Chris. Item number 10, Personnel Pension and Insurance Committee consideration and potential action regarding disability retirement. Is it Brakel? Is that the person? Is there a motion?
Somewhat moved.
Is there any, is there a possibility of an executive session?
John, why don't we give a, an overview and then if, if necessary, if we get, I'm sorry.
Chris Stone, district counsel. If we get into the details of the employees, injuries, any personal information, we can move into executive session. But I think the conclusions reached by his doctor, by our, our people, I, I don't think we're arguing the fact that this gentleman is, is disabled and unable to engage in gainful employment, but I'll let you, or Jamie, I'm sorry, Jamie.
Jamie?
Yes.
Good evening, commissioners. Jamie Harlow, Director of HR. The petition before you is a long-term employee who has requested disability retirement. We have had the medical records reviewed by our physician. The individual employee has also applied and been approved for social security disability benefits. And obviously both avenues have confirmed he is unable to, to have gainful employment. So we respectfully request the board to approve the petition for disability retirement. If there's specific questions, I can address them.
Commissioner Taylor, please.
Chairman, this matter was passed unanimously at the PPI.
Any questions? Do you want to get into the summary of?
I think that's it. It's just, it's not a dollar amount. It's a?
We're not, we're not, we're not opposing the position. There's a common agreement. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item number 11, Committee on MDC Government, consideration and potential action regarding a, revision of bylaws, B6D, disclosure of interests, and b, code of ethics acknowledgement and potential conflict of interest disclosure form. Can we take these up together or do we have to?
You can, you can take them up together. I just would like Steve to explain, there was one addition or modification.
As amended, right.
To, to item A. So Steve, if you can go into that.
Before you start, this, is there any objection to combining the two together on the, without objection? Steve, would you move forward as amended? I should have, it should, we're going to have to add the amendment.
It's been amended.
As amended, as amended from, from the committee, as amended. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Bonifati, Assistant District Counsel. The District, the Committee of MDC Government passed unanimously the, the resolves that you have before you. There was one change in amendment and that would be to the district bylaws portion on section B. The first sentence, on or before January 31st of each year, with the additional language or within 30 days of appointment. The reason being that if we had a new commissioner appointed after January 31st, that they would serve for the remainder of the year without having filed the form. So that was brought up as an addition and a friendly amendment that was passed. And that language is mirrored also on the form itself. So I have to answer any questions about the form itself or the proposal for the district bylaws?
Are there questions? Commissioner Drake?
I, I got to read through it. I was reading through the, I went through the second paragraph and maybe you can explain it to me better. But if I read that, if anybody has a family member that works there, you, you can't even vote on the budget, right? If I read that correctly, or am I wrong? The second paragraph on the?
That's on what, A or B?
B6D, first page. Will you guys cross out the A, B? Again, I could, I could read it wrong, but if I read it, the way I interpret it, if you have a family member, you really shouldn't be able to vote on the budget here.
John, what's he looking at?
So, if I may.
Which, which section is that in A or B?
I believe he's looking at number two in the bylaw.
See the little A, B is crossed out in red?
B2.
That paragraph's right there. Again, it's kind of a legal thing.
Are you asking about the, is it in black text or red?
It's in black, but the A, B in front of it's crossed out. I mean, you can see it, it's the first page.
Yeah. The, so the, the black text is the existing bylaw?
I understand it, but again, I, not to be here that long, but if I read this, I read it three or four times. If you have a family member, you shouldn't be able to vote on the budget here, the way I interpret it.
There's, I'll, I'll try to find it. I'm not sure if it's in this bylaw or another one, but there is language where a circumstance or situation that has general applicability.
It's at the end of section. Yeah. If you look, Commissioner Drake, at the bottom of page 11A1, it starts, "Withstanding the prohibition in that section, an officer, commissioner, citizen, member, employee may vote or otherwise participate in a matter if it involves a determination of general policy and interest shared with a substantial segment of the population of the municipality." So if it's a general policy that affects all employees, for example, that affects the entire population of the metropolitan district, that's okay, even though that person.
That says.
What's that? Yeah, that's what that says.
Okay. I believe you, but again, I read it and I would accept it. So jeez, nobody can vote on anything if you have a family member here. So, okay. As long as we understand that. Thanks.
Now, if, just give you the opposite example, if I might. Chris Stone, district counsel. If, if there's an issue before the PPI committee on a disability retirement for a family member of one of the commissioners, that's something they shouldn't be sitting on. That's where that would apply. You know, that prohibition would apply.
Further questions? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Item 12, Ethics Advisory Board Report, Possible Ethics Violation by Commissioner Taylor, September 19th, 2022. Commissioner Wolf, is there a motion to accept the advisory board recommendation?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion.
For a second.
Second.
All right. I'm going to read a brief report on the Ethics Advisory Board and our, the actions that we took. So the Ethics Advisory Board received a referral on September 7th from the Internal Audit Committee. The referral alleged that Commissioner Ellen Taylor met with a representative of the law firm, Sandler and Mara, in an attempt to negotiate a settlement of the claim that Jim Sandler of the Sandler and Mara Law Firm has against the MDC and further that he contacted one or more commissioners to solicit their support. The referral also noted that with regards to the particular claim against the MDC, commissioners and citizen members were specifically advised not to engage with Jim Sandler of the Sandler and Mara Law Firm or representatives of Jim Sandler regarding the claim. Finally, in his referral, the Internal Audit Committee asked the Ethics Advisory Board to determine whether Commissioner Taylor violated the MDC's ethic rules and if so, to recommend to the district board what, if any, action should be taken as a result. On September 14th, the Ethics Advisory Board held an organizational meeting. On September 19th, the Ethics Advisory Board convened again to consider the referral from the Internal Audit Committee. At that meeting, we heard testimony from Commissioner Taylor. At that meeting, we heard testimony from Commissioner Taylor, from Commissioner Avedisian, and from Commissioner Mandike, and provided members of the public and other commissioners the opportunity to weigh in on the matter. The Ethics Advisory Board then met in executive session to consider the facts presented to us in that meeting. After coming out of executive session, the board voted two to one in favor of a resolution, finding that, one, Commissioner Taylor admitted to meeting with a representative from the law firm of Sandler &amp; Mara on two occasions. Two, without questioning Commissioner Taylor's motives, the board found that Commissioner Taylor's actions constituted a technical violation of MDC bylaw B6D. Three, the board recommends that there be a finding of an ethical violation by Commissioner Taylor, but that the district board take no discipline or censure against Commissioner Taylor, that he be advised that any similar violations may lead to adverse consequences. And then, four, the Ethics Advisory Board further recommends that no commissioner should meet with any individual or representative of any entity, constituent or otherwise, having any adverse claim or claims against the MDC. To the extent that there is any question as to whether any adverse claim exists, the matter should be referred to District Counsel.
Further discussion? Commissioner Payne?
Thank you. I want to thank the Ethics Committee for all their work, and I just have a question for the Ethics Committee, the chairman or any of the members. Would your findings for this be different if you knew that there was an additional violation from Commissioner Taylor previous to this? Because I recall that, I think it was Scott filled us in on one of our boards, that there was another violation earlier in the year.
Wasn't there a violation?
Am I wrong? Was there a third? Wasn't there a violation earlier?
I'm not sure if there was a violation. Well, there wasn't. If it's the events relating to a procurement, there was no finding of a violation of the Ethics Code. There was a meeting in which Chairman Taylor recused himself, but that's, recusing yourself doesn't constitute a violation of the code.
I thought you had filled our committee in that there was a violation in your mind, and it led to some disciplinary, or maybe not disciplinary, but he was warned to be careful on certain things, I guess.
Scott Ellison. So at the audit committee meeting, I believe, I don't remember the date, but there was a question regarding an incident in the past regarding a procurement issue that occurred in the January 2021 through April, May of '21. We didn't get into the details of that issue, but that was an issue that I did address with the chairman and with Commissioner Taylor, District Counsel, our procurement staff, and it did not come up at the, it wasn't addressed at the Ethics Committee. It was an issue that, you know, was concerning. We did address it. I believe that's why we have the, you know, part of our discussion that I had with the chairman and Commissioner Taylor was that the fallout of that issue was developing 2B-K and the ethics policy.
Yeah, so my question is, if this information was provided to the Ethics Board, would their findings be a little different? That's just one statement. And then I found it very interesting reading and was curious on, Commissioner Taylor had talked to 13 to 15 different people on this board, and only one came forward and noticed that it was improper. Just think about that. And thank you very much for your work on there, Mr. Wolf. Commissioner Wolf?
Thank you. And to answer your question, you know, I can't go back in time and consider how I would have, or how the other members would have acted had we had that information, but we did provide the, you know, the entire board the opportunity to come before the Ethics Advisory Board and weigh in, and that issue wasn't before us. So, you know, we acted on the facts that were presented to us.
Thank you.
Jackie?
Yes.
Commissioner Mandike, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Mandike, I'm wondering if District Counsel, Mr. Chair, could just go through a little bit of the difference between us voting on the Ethics Advisory Board report tonight and the B2K issue. We have several new commissioners, and maybe we could just do that so everyone understands exactly, we've got two similar but different items this evening, and if you don't mind just going through that for us? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner. Chris Stone, District Counsel. The Ethics Code, which is bylaws B6, or the section B6 of our bylaws, provides for many prohibitions, limitations, restrictions on commissioners' staff and officers of the MDC. In addition, as of, I believe, I want to say January, was it January or February of 2022, the code was amended to add the Ethics Advisory Board, which we had never had before. So this was a new endeavor on their part in terms of having a hearing and making these findings. That being said, because the Ethics Advisory Board is within that section, B6 of our bylaws, their, in their charge, it says violations of this code, which is B6. Their charge is to determine whether there's been a violation of those sections of our bylaws. And that's what, that was their charge, and they completed their charge. In addition to that section, B6, there's another section, which is B2, section B2 of our bylaws, which provides for another, I wouldn't say avenue, but another section in which arguably, or at least on its face, the same fact pattern, the same findings of fact that arrived at by the Ethics Advisory Board would be, could be applied to this section, and that is B6. I want to make sure I get the letter right. B2, B2K, sorry, B2K. And so that's a different section of our bylaws. It's not part of our Code of Ordinances. You may want to consider at some, the board, not you personally, but the board may want to consider moving forward to incorporate that or move that section into the Ethics Code. It seems perhaps it's more germane there, but absent that, that B2K speaks only to a action that may be taken by the board. There's no such referral to the Ethics Advisory Board. The Committee on Internal Audit was the committee that initially referred that situation to the full board, and it was on the agenda, I think, a month ago, if I might, Mr. Chairman? Two months ago. And it was moved to or postponed until such time as the Ethics Advisory Board completed its task. So it's, that's how much they're related, but certainly factually, the facts as to one applied, the same facts that would apply to the other.
So through you, Mr. Chair, just two additional questions, if I may?
Sure.
Commissioner Mandike, thank you. So could it be assumed that under this scenario, that if there is a violation that's found under the Ethics Advisory Board, that there is also a presumption that there's a violation of B2K?
Because the facts that are presented, and I want to be clear, careful on this, but the facts that have been presented to the Ethics Advisory Board were statements by Commissioner Taylor. Right now, as we sit here, there have been, other than statements made by Commissioner Taylor, that are contained in meeting minutes and/or transcripts of meetings, which all of you may not have seen. As to B2K, you haven't had a vetting of those facts, per se. You have, again, and the Ethics Advisory Board dealt with a set of facts, basically statements from Commissioner Taylor at its meeting of September 17. But those aren't, while there are conclusions reached from those facts, this full board has not had, I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you've had the luxury of reviewing all the transcripts that were otherwise available to that board when it made its deliberations. So it's not, some of the things that they may have considered in finding an ethical code violation, facts, because of the nuances of 2B-K, may not be sufficient to support a 2B-K violation, and you'd need to incorporate by reference, at the very least, each of the transcripts that, in which Commissioner Taylor, to his credit, and candidly expressed to various boards, whether it be the full board, the audit committee, or the, I don't think it was the audit committee, but, or the Ethics Advisory Board, as to what happened. And that's all we have in terms of evidence, is what Commissioner Taylor related to us. No one was there. Attorney Morrow didn't provide any testimony or any statement. All we have is what Commissioner Taylor had expressed at various meetings.
And then, Mr. Chair, just the final one. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Commissioner Wolf, if I could. Through the Ethics Advisory Board, you know, I did read through the transcript. I was at the meeting at the time, as you mentioned, that I did testify. Do you, was, in any of the discussions or the deliberations, was there a consideration taken in for whether or not Commissioner Taylor believed the actions that he took were an actual violation?
2B? And B2K, or?
No, the Ethics Advisory Board, they were not looking at B2K.
Whether or not he believed it was an actual violation?
Correct. To your recollection.
Not that I can recall, no.
Thank you.
Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, I'd like to thank Commissioner Taylor for full transparency in responding to questions from the Ethics Advisory Board, and I'd also like to thank the Ethics Advisory Board for doing its duty, its responsibility, and coming forward with what I think is a reasonable finding and resolution. So thank you.
Commissioner Salimi?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I would like to ask Commissioner Wolf. I read the statement, and I heard him, his explanation this evening, about the finding by the Ethics Advisory Board that there was a technical violation. And I believe, which one are we talking about? Is it, I'm sorry, 2B6, is that what we're talking about?
No, this is the advisory. The motion before us is the advisory.
The violation they found was in association with?
E6D. B6D.
B6?
D, as in dollars.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have, I thought I had it memorized. I apologize.
Not B2K.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not suggesting anything about B2K. I'm just talking about this particular one. So it suggests that there was a technical violation found. Could you describe that violation using the vocabulary of the ethics? Because I, of the ethics clause itself? Because I'm assuming that you, you know, through the minutes in the meeting and the transcripts and everything, that there was a discussion about what, in fact, was the violation. But my reading of that, you know, I'm just trying to associate the actual vocabulary or words that said, well, you're not supposed to do this, with what Commissioner Taylor actually did. So can you, could you, you know, you said that there's a technical violation. What are the words or the vocabulary that say that it's, that prohibits the actions that he took? If, for us, so we can all understand that. I'm only questioning it for clarity, so that I understand it, and maybe I'm the only one that has a question about it, but...
Sure. So it says, "No officer, commissioner, citizen, member, or employee engage in or participate in any business or transaction, including outside employment with a private business, or pursue an interest directly or indirectly, which is," and here's the key statement, "incompatible with the proper discharge of his or her official responsibilities in the public interest." So incompatible with the proper discharge of his or her official responsibilities in the public interest.
Okay, so what Commissioner Taylor actually said, and I think he was very, like Don Curry said, I think he was very candid about what he said. So what he said, that actually constituted a violation of his duties as a commissioner?
What he said or what he did?
What he said he did, which I thought was the same thing, but, you know...
No, I mean, it's, yeah, it's not. So what he did was the violation. He had...
Okay. No, no, I'm willing, I'm willing to, I'm willing to accept that. I think, I thank you for, you know, for pointing out the exact language of it, but I'm willing to accept that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner?
Yes, I went through the language also, it's a little confusing, I think, subject to interpretation, if you will, that B6D. And I didn't see how that was a conflict of interest, as it appeared to me that it would be a conflict of interest if there was a particular interest in him doing that for personal interest. That's how I read that. And I read, and I, so I went back to the law dictionary, and I tried to figure that out. And again, I didn't, I really did not see how speaking to outside of the board was in his interest, in his interest to do that. So I was a little confused about that, as to why, you know, we're saying that there's a conflict of interest there, you know, on his part, because he had nothing to gain personally from doing this, other than the work of the board, which was trying to resolve this particular issue. And I, too, I want to thank the Ethics, because it's a tough, it's a tough situation we have here, and trying to also decipher the language, you know, that appears in the bylaws. But for the sake, you know, of trying to move forward with this and try not to muddy the waters any longer, I would support moving this resolution forward. However, I don't think that the assertion that was made before, that the advisory board should have taken into consideration, even, you know, stuff that may have happened in the past, I don't think that's relevant to the deliberations which were placed, which was to look at the merits of that particular complaint. Not to go back and discuss something else, which was never discussed at this board. So, you know, again, you know, I think you have to bifurcate this and say, no, the advisory, the Ethics Advisory Board did what it was supposed to do. It looked into it, it researched it, it interpreted the bylaws, and it came out with its findings. Again, you know, I don't agree with it, but I do, you know, in the interest of moving this forward and getting over it and getting on to the real business of the MDC, that I intend to support this resolution.
Just very quickly, if I may?
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Stone, District Counsel, in response to the question posed of Commissioner Wolf and in defense of the Ethics Advisory Board, not all ethics violations have to constitute a conflict of interest. And as you go through the B6 section, the acceptance of gifts, for example, the seeking employment, for example, all involve activity which is prohibited but don't necessarily fit and pigeonholed into this whole conflict of interest concept. So under B6D, it relates to disclosure of interest. I would submit to you that subsection B of that section does talk about conflicts of interest and the like. We get that. But what Commissioner Wolf read from was the first section of B6D, which we felt...
But what Commissioner Wolf read from was the first section of B six D, which we felt, that they felt, and I agree with them, did apply.
Commissioner. Commissioner Adel.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Can I ask Chairman Wolf, was Commissioner Taylor accepting of your findings?
I don't have the transcript in front of me, but I believe Commissioner Taylor thanked the commission for its work. And, yeah, I think we'd have to look back at the transcript to see what exactly he said. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but he did, you know, accept the ruling.
Commissioner Taylor.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I thought that the Ethics Committee did a good job. I thought that as a commissioner, since the firm in question was a Bloomfield firm, and I've known these people for some thirty-odd years, and I was very careful in my discussions with them, that I cannot make any agreements on or for the MDC. You are a constituent. I'm a Bloomfield representative. I feel that I can talk to you and try to discern and listen to you as to what you think are the issues. But I cannot make any agreements. And I don't want you to think that I am here once again on behalf of the board. I'm a Bloomfield rep. And I feel that as such, I can talk to you as a constituent. Because quite frankly, at that point in time, my frame of mind was, hmm, there are a number of incidents in this company where people have come in on behalf or with constituents with regards to issues or alleged claims that they've had insofar as the MDC is concerned. And that's everything from bills to, you know, sewage backing up in their basements or what have you. And I view this basically as being no more or no different from that kind of situation. You had a law firm that had a beef. They had issues. It involved us. As a commissioner, I felt that, you know, I can look at it, try to obtain as much information as I possibly could, but that I could not bind this organization. I could not speak for this organization. I was very clear with Dan Mara that if there was anything with regards to the issue in question, it would come from the MDC. It would come from the MDC through a party who was, in effect, authorized and had the authority to act on the MDC's behalf. Now, you know, why did I call the other commissioners? Because I had a discussion with the constituents. And what I wanted to do was to get back to my fellow commissioners and say, if possible, we needed five commissioners to call a meeting where essentially we could discuss what I found. And I was very clear, once again, with Dan Mara, that, look, I can listen to you, I can give you my view as a Bloomfield commissioner, I can hear your side of the story, but if I'm going to do anything with regard to this particular matter or issue, I have to bring it back to my fellow commissioners. That's why the telephone calls. All right? That was the only reason for the telephone calls. I was very careful to say that I had not reached an agreement with the firm. I don't have that authority. And I'm not dumb enough to think that I have that authority. I've been around the block a couple of times, and I was trying to do as much as I possibly could to isolate this, this, these two activities with regards to the issues that were going on. Because quite frankly, you know, in my humble opinion, we were making a mountain out of a molehill, but that's neither here nor there. Now, you know, that's, that's the extent of my activities. I have no interest in the law firm. I am not involved in any transactions with that law firm. They have been in Bloomfield. I have known those people for thirty years. I have worked on the Democratic Town Committee with those people, okay? So basically, I felt as a commissioner, I could go to a constituent and ask the question, what's going on? Nothing more, nothing less. And that's, that's the extent of what we're really talking about here. So I want to be clear about that. Now, as with regard to the other matter that was raised, once again, that related to something that if I talked to you about it, it was a matter that, once again, I had no financial, business, or other relationships.
He's talking about the April.
Okay? But I don't want to get into that. But I just want you to understand very clearly, I felt that I was acting as a commissioner who had a constituent who had a problem. It was a claim. It wasn't gone to litigation, okay? Because if it was gone to litigation, even though they were lawyering up, okay, it had not gone to litigation. And even if it had gone to litigation, I would imagine that the judge probably would have said, you know, can you folks go in the room over there and talk about this? Now, you know, we're in, we're in for fifty K on this. But, you know, once again, that's all I did. Nothing more, nothing less. And I felt that the Ethics Committee did a good job. They were fair. They listened, you know, and basically, I wanted this to be dealt with and to get it behind me, all right? No more, no less. Now, you know, you can, you know, nuke this thing or heat it up or whatever else. But my attitude basically is that if you've got an issue or a problem, you deal with it. Am I completely happy with it? No. But, you know, fine, we're all adults here. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion on the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We have new commissioners here, and I think some commissioners were not privy to some of the meetings, and I think it's very important to just take you through a couple of action items, so everybody understands and has the timeline for this and exactly what happened. You can look these things up through our minutes. Anything else, the Internal Audit Committee has taken extensive look at some of these things. So just very quickly, Mr. Chair, if I could. On July twenty-sixth, our District Council received invoices after multiple attempts by Sandler Mara Law Firm that they claimed that they had done work from us from January through July. We received those on July twenty-sixth through our District Council Office, 2022. Thank you very much, Commissioner Bush. On eight one, there was a special meeting called to discuss these invoices that San Lamar did not have a contract through MDC on. At that special meeting, Commissioner Taylor moved to refer this issue to the Internal Audit Committee. At that point, it was seconded, and the next thing that happened is Commissioner Taylor said that he had to recuse himself from this because of a conflict of interest. The motion was then brought by someone else because he was recusing himself of this issue, and it was seconded, and it was moved to the Internal Audit Committee. I think that's very important for everyone to realize, that at that point in time, on August first, Commissioner Taylor noted that he was recusing himself for a purpose, whatever that might be, from this issue. On eight three, this is two days later, District Council Stone sent all of us an email, and I will read you a portion of that email. It said, "All, based upon their discussions at the board meeting Monday and the referral to the Internal Audit Committee, I strongly advise each of you not to have any communication in any form with Chairman DiBella or Attorney Sandler, any person affiliated with Attorney Sandler, or any representatives of Attorney Sandler regarding the issues referred to the committee. I am confident that the chairman will not be contacting you, et cetera, et cetera." So we were warned on August third, or at least requested not to get involved in this. On August fourth, we had invited Attorney Sandler to come before the Internal Audit Committee to speak with us about the invoices, so we could ask him questions. He did not respond to us, and we were informed that he had retained counsel on eight four. In between eight four and eight twenty-three, two meetings initiated by Commissioner Taylor, by Commissioner Taylor initiated, occurred with the partner of Sandler Mara. And you can read the testimony at forty-four minutes and twenty-seven seconds that Commissioner Taylor said that that occurred. On eight twenty-three, I was informed by one other commissioner that he had been called by Commissioner Taylor to talk about the meeting that he had had with Mara. So we know that not one, but two meetings had occurred during that time. And if I could, I'll just go through the timeline. Eight twenty-five, as chair of the Internal Audit Committee, I called Commissioner Taylor to tell him that before the Internal Audit Committee, I was going to refer this issue over to the Ethics Commission, just to give him a heads up before the meeting that occurred that evening. And that evening at our internal audit, it was unanimously passed on the Internal Audit Committee to refer this over to the Ethics Advisory Commission. On nine seven, so September seventh, Commissioner Taylor admitted that he had met with Mara from Sandler Mara. On nine nineteen, at the Ethics Advisory Committee, we found out that not just once, but he had met twice, and that he initiated both meetings. Now, I also want to just read to you a little bit of the transcript, because Commissioner Taylor said that he wanted just the information to be able to make sure that he understood his constituents' opinions and what was going on and their side of the story. He says here, at, in the transcript of the Ethics Advisory Committee, if anything, my approach or suggestion to them was basically, this is him talking to Mara of San Lamar, you know, guys, you've made a fair amount of money here, and with this kind of controversy, you probably would be a lot smarter to just walk away from it all. And oh, by the way, you're not going to get any more work from MDC. That crosses the line as far as not just getting information. This is telling them what's going to happen. Now, if you also look, let me just go back for a second. Commissioner Taylor also said on that meeting on the nineteenth, "Once there was a consensus or a concern or a fear that the matter should be allowed to run its course with regards to the Internal Audit Committee, I backed away, did nothing further, sat there and just sort of watched the swirl of activity." According to what I've just told you, that statement is untrue if you look at the dates of when this all happened, because the Commissioner Taylor originally referred this issue to the Internal Audit Committee, and the Audit Committee met on eight four. And in between eight four and eight twenty-three, two meetings occurred. Now, I am in agreement that there is a violation from the Ethics Advisory Committee. Looking at what this board could or could not do, I believe that Commissioner Taylor should be stepping off of internal audit based on the fact that he recused himself from this issue and then involved himself in this issue quite extensively, as I've just pointed out to all my fellow commissioners. The second thing is, I believe Commissioner Taylor should step down as chair of PP&amp;I. I believe that the ethical violation and the finding of an ethical violation, he should not be chairing a committee. He decides what is on the agendas for those committees, and he determines how those committee meetings run. And I believe that it is in the best interest of this commission and this board that Commissioner Taylor stepped down, like I said, from internal audit and as chair of PP&amp;I. I'm not saying this lightly. I'm saying this because, as you've heard this evening, and if you've read the testimony, Commissioner Taylor does not perceive that this is a violation but accepts it. And I'm concerned. If this was something that he had said, that he was apologizing for, that he made wrong, I think this is different. So therefore, I will vote in favor of the violation, but I believe that Commissioner Taylor should step down voluntarily as both chair of PP&amp;I and from internal audit.
Are there further comments? Commissioner Taylor.
Interesting. First of all, why did I recuse myself? And what was the basis for the recusal? I had drafted a memo for the Strategic Planning Committee of the MDC. And the purpose of that memo was to raise the issue with regards to the interconnectedness of water systems in the state of Connecticut. And that if you looked at the fact that there are several areas in this state that are having serious water problems, either because of quality or just lack of access, that there needed to be some way to move water around the state. I had drafted the memorandum with regard to that issue being raised at the state legislature level, so that in effect, if someone could look at it, there could be a discussion with hopefully the MDC being heavily involved, because quite frankly, we have the water. I guess foolishly, I showed that memorandum to Jim Sandler. And Jim Sandler said, oh, that's interesting, why don't I take you to lunch? And I went to lunch, and we discussed it. And we talked about a number of other things. It was only after the bills were flowing across the threshold here, or the doorway, that I was told that I was mentioned in one of the bills. And that was the basis upon which I decided, well, maybe I'd better recuse myself. That was the only basis upon which I recused myself. I had a lunch on an issue. And by the way, counsel has a copy of the memo. I gave him a copy of the memo, and I have passed that copy. All of the emails between Sandler and myself with regard to that particular issue, that was the only reason that I had been in contact prior to all of these events with Sandler. That was the only issue, and that was the only basis for my recusing myself, because basically, I was mentioned in a bill. And I thought, just to be safe, rather than to be sorry, because there was a lot of stuff flying around, that I would recuse myself. That was the only thing. And as I said to you before, counsel has a copy of that memo, and he has a copy of the emails. Because when I recused myself, I gave him a copy. And that's the only basis of my recusing myself on this issue, because I don't want people thinking here that there was something subterranean going on. That was it. Now, look, once again, I want to be very clear. What I said tomorrow, look, I think, me, as a rep here in Bloomfield, I can talk to you, but I cannot speak for the MDC. I was very careful about that. Very, very careful. Very, very careful. And that was the extent, you know, and there were two meetings, yes. And why should I lie about it? Why should I deny it? But, you know, the only purpose, once again, was to look at the issue, to get my constituents' view.
We certainly may.
And once it reached a point where it looked as if maybe it was going to go to litigation, and oh, by the way, by this time, some of us were running scared, because there was a lot of publicity, and we didn't want to, you know, step up on the issue. So I just backed off and did nothing, okay? Now, you know, punish me if you will, but, you know, I thought, in all honesty, that I was behaving appropriately as a commissioner. And oh, by the way, you know, the mere fact that the General Counsel advises its advisory, okay? It is nothing more, nothing less. As a commissioner, I feel very strongly that unless it is a situation within the context of litigation, I have a right to speak to my constituents.
Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we're moving a bit away from the motion before us and the issue before us, so I move the question.
There's a motion to move the question that requires a two-thirds vote. Can you hold on that? Is this relative to?
No, the motion has to see.
It hasn't been seconded yet. I just want to confirm.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Okay. It's not debatable. It's not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote of the board. Let's find out what the feeling is, to move directly to the vote on the main motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? One opposition.
I just wish more than one.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let's do it by hand, okay? Is that?
You can't show hands on this tee.
So you got to go verbally. You're going to have to call a roll.
Okay, the vote on...
The motion is to cut off debate and to move to the vote on the main motion.
Adel?
Yes.
Avedision?
No.
Bazano?
Bush?
No.
Curry?
Yes.
DiBella?
Yes.
Drake?
No.
Gale?
Yes.
Gardo?
Yes.
Gentile?
Yes.
Hoffman?
No.
Holloway?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Magnan?
Yes.
Mandike?
No.
Payne?
No.
Patel?
Yes.
Salemi?
Yes.
Taylor?
I can't vote on this.
Torres?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
It was 21 to 6.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion from the Ethics Advisory Commission, signify by saying...
Aye!
Oh, 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 oh.
Sorry, it was 21 total, it was 15 to 6. Still, yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to accept the Advisory Commission's recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye!
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
And can I confirm, that was unanimous? There were no oppositions?
Was there any objection? It was unanimous.
I can't talk anymore about it, I'm not supportive.
Okay. Item 13, consideration and potential action regarding potential violation of the bylaw B-2K by Commissioner Taylor. Where do we go on this?
Well, District Council, Chris Stone, you've just voted on the Ethics Advisory Board recommendation and supported the findings and the recommendation. Has indicated in response to a question from Attorney Mandike previously, while those two sections relate to similar events and a fact pattern that is supported by one way or the other, by one source, and that is statements by Commissioner Taylor, they're not identical. And there may or may not be information within the transcripts of meetings that were held in one or more of your minds, once you had an opportunity to read them, that may compel you to think one way or the other about whether the violation of B-2K actually occurred. I represent all of you, and my client is being asked to act upon a alleged violation of the Ethics Board, of the, excuse me, of B-2K. And I guess I'll leave it to my client to determine whether they have enough information in front of them, or have had the ability or information available to them to review. And in effect, what I'm talking about are the transcripts of these meetings that have taken place over the past several months. I am told by the district clerk that if a commissioner asks for a document, whether it be a transcript or anything else of him, that he sends the response not just to the commissioner who requested the document, but to all of you. There are other instances in which internal staff has asked for transcripts of meetings. I know I have in this particular case. I don't know if Mr. Jelson has or has not, but those transcripts may or may not have reached all of you, and I'm not going to go through them to see who's got them or who doesn't. But those transcripts may not have been available to everybody. Or have been made, they've been available, but not have been made available to everybody. In other words, they haven't been sent to you. So if you want the opportunity to review what I would consider to be the entire record, in fairness to everybody, including Commissioner Taylor, but also to each of you who have to make a determination that this, or maybe has to make a determination either now or some other date, then I think the proper way to proceed is to, time is not an issue necessarily, but in the abundance of caution, I would like the opportunity to distribute all the transcripts, all the statements, which basically are the statements that are made by Commissioner Taylor on the issue, not just his statements, but also the responses he gave to questions that were posed, including the statements he's made this evening, and send those to you, and then move this to a December meeting where you each have an opportunity, or a special meeting, each have an opportunity to review the documents and the full record. If you feel you want to proceed without the full record, so be it, but I advise against that.
I also think that we have three commissioners that have not been involved, which would give them the ability to review the total.
Well, yeah, and District Council, and in fairness to them, they felt it was based upon the referral and the presentation by Commissioner Wolf, that while they probably didn't attend, did not attend the Ethics Advisory Board meeting, because they weren't sworn in yet, but they still felt that they could vote on the underlying motion in the Section A of this particular agenda item, which is fine. But you haven't, well, I know you haven't had the opportunity, unless, because I didn't see at any meetings, to see the transcripts of prior meetings. So I appreciate the chairman for bringing that to my attention and to the board's attention, and at least three members of this body, I know, have not seen the whole, the entire record.
I read it. Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I ask that we postpone action until we have an opportunity to totally review the transcripts. But also, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, I mean, on the agenda, we have, put my glasses back on. Don't get old, guys. B-2K. B-2K, is it B-2K?
A B-2K.
Yeah, but you didn't provide that section. Yes, I went and looked it up, but you need to make it easy for us guys and gals, and provide, when you're referring to something, attach it to the agenda. So I'm asking to postpone action until we all can review the transcripts and the section of bylaws that we're being dealt with.
Is that a motion to postpone it to a specific meeting or a special meeting? I'm sorry, December?
I'm just postponing action. I leave it to you to put it on.
So you want to table it?
Well, I guess. Postpone or table?
Is that a motion to table? Table? Yeah, you can do that. You're going to...
This is John Merle. It would be a motion to postpone, but if I heard Commissioner Curry correctly, you were asking to postpone. Are you making a motion to postpone?
I will move that we postpone.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify.
One question on discussion. So Commissioner, General Counsel has said that you're going to provide the documentation, all the documentation, so not just testimony from Commissioner Taylor, but the minutes, transcripts, the meeting. Is there, in addition to that, is there an original complaint that Commissioner Taylor violated, the B-2K thing?
There's no complaint. There's a, there's a...
Motion.
There's, were statements made at the Internal Audit Committee meeting that gave the, rose the level of being a question as to whether or not. So there's been no findings, there's been no complaint, there's been no...
I'm just saying, you're going to provide all of this documentation.
Yes, yes, yes.
But what's before us is a formal resolution from the Committee on Audit, isn't there?
No, there's no, 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 no. Chris Stone, District Council, just to be clear, this section of our bylaws is a section in B-2K that deals specifically with interactions between members of this commission, citizen members, and staff, and consultants, and contractors. That's what this is all about. The only, it's the only, it's a section that requires, if any, investigation and action by the board. There's no referral to audit, there's no referral to Advisory Board. It's something that's in the province of this body. Period.
Okay. Commissioner Curry, do you want to say something? Oh, I thought you were... Go ahead.
Yeah, move the question.
21-6.
Don't say that, then we've got to have another vote.
Mr. Chairman, you'll have to bear with me here. Since you're all going to be looking at B-2K, what you're really talking about is the interpretation of a bylaw. I would submit to you that B-2K does not apply to me in this particular instance. It relates specifically to matters concerning people who report to the chief executive officer. That's the first thing.
Yeah. Excuse me, Commissioner Taylor, this is a motion to postpone. The question is to whether to postpone it or not, not to get into the merits of the issue.
But he'll have an opportunity.
You'll have an opportunity to do that at some point in time. But the motion to postpone is just to the motion to postpone, not to the merits of the motion. So is there further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to postpone, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Item 14, Internal Audit Committee Report Regarding Investigation of Sandler Mara PC Invoices. Yeah, I understand. I'm not sure that that's... Go ahead, Maureen.
It's up to a person, isn't it?
Well, there may be a point of order, but, I mean, this is an issue that's before the Internal Audit Committee.
I understand, it's up to the, yep.
Item 14, Internal Audit Committee Report Regarding the Investigation of Sandler Mara PC Invoices. Commissioner Mandike?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is Commissioner Mandike. I just wanted to take a few minutes to give everyone an update. As of the September meeting, this commission passed a resolution to authorize $50,000 up to a third-party investigator to look at the issues before the Internal Audit Committee. Since that time, I want to applaud my fellow commissioners on internal audit. We have interviewed three firms, we have selected a firm. That firm has been on board, I think, for about two weeks now, District Council, so for about two weeks. We've provided them with information that I think many of you on the board have also seen. They are going through and doing their due diligence, and we are hoping to meet our deadline of 30 days. If not, I will make sure that we report back. The law firm, or the outside investigator will be meeting with the internal audit, those who want to meet with them, on the Internal Audit Committee on Monday at 4:30. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Chair?
Okay. Opportunity for public comment. Commissioners, questions and answer, I'm sorry, comments and questions. Commissioner?
Yes, Commissioner Torres here.
Torres.
I just wanted, I didn't have the opportunity, because we closed off the comment regarding the issues of...
Motion to postpone.
No, prior to that, Commissioner Taylor's explanation of why he recused himself, if I recall very vividly, Commissioner Taylor had made the motion to send this issue to the Ethics Advisory Board Committee, at which point, he then stated that because he was named in one of the bills, that he felt he had to recuse himself. Saying he did. At which point, then, I made the motion to send it to the Ethics Committee, because I thought it was proper to do that. I just wanted, for the record, to make sure that, yes, he did say it, and it was on, it was said on the floor, and those that were here present heard it. Thank you.
Just for the record, my District Council, Cal, I think you referred to the Internal Audit Committee.
The Internal Audit Committee.
Yeah, just, that's okay. That's all right.
Further, Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I just want to say thank you to Attorney Stone. I think he's doing a great job with MDC business. I'm wondering if there's, and through you, Mr. Chair, to Attorney Stone, I wonder if there's any opportunity for you to negotiate with member towns that are in arrears on paying for catch basin cleanout. I have trouble with that. I always want to call them street drains, but I guess because of where I grew up, we didn't have those. Similar to what you've done with those member towns in arrears for water bill payments, with the understanding that part of that would be, in the future, they would stay current.
Yeah, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think you should...
As to the catch basins, in most, in, most of all member towns, with the exception of the city of Hartford, the stormwater system, and therefore the catch basins, are controlled by, maintained by the member towns. The exception is the city of Hartford, and as you know, we have an ongoing dispute with the city of Hartford as to reimbursement for our cost for what I, what I call excess catch basin cleanouts, because of the lack of, the failure of the city, although it's been better, the failure of the city to accurately, adequately sweep the streets. Those negotiations continue. We're trying to wrap up a lot of issues as part of a global... We're trying to wrap up a lot of issues as part of a global resolution of that. We do have, and I'm sure the members from Hartford know this, we do have a proposal that we've received from the city that we've been reviewing. It is, it does something towards what's owed, it's a little light on going forwards, and that's been the disconnect, but we continue to work on that issue. I don't know if you're talking about some other issue with some other member towns that may have an arrears on catch basin cleanout for which they owe the MDC monies? I'm not familiar with that.
No, I don't, I just didn't want to...
Okay, just, just...
Oh, that's all right, well, they know, they know.
Just for the record, this evolved out of a dispute over, what, $800,000, $860,000? Somewhere in that area. And there was a rather lengthy negotiation between the city and MDC over invoices and billing. And we basically washed half of, more than half of that out. There was a $380,000 amount that was left over that dealt with what our chief legal counsel just pointed out. That's still an ongoing negotiation, trying to settle it.
To get to that point, though, I don't want to misinterpret by the term washed. It was, there were reconciliations of accounts, yeah.
Reconciliation, I should say.
Yes, we didn't settle on the claim. It was, we went through meticulously with the finance staff, thank you, with Scott Jellison, with the finance staff of the city of Hartford, which were excellent communication. And we basically took that $800,000 and basically reconciled it in a roughly half of that, of that $800,000. And of that $800,000, as you know, there's this outstanding balance for cleaning of catch basins as it results from the lack of cleaning of the streets per the MS-4 regulations dictated by DEEP. I just drove through Albany Avenue this, just yesterday, and it looked great. It looked excellent. You know, unfortunately, MDC had to go to the level of putting grates on the catch basins. But to the credit of the city, Albany Avenue looked very nice. I was very happy to see the street as clean as it was, so...
But a significant amount of the money unresolved basically comes out of fees for disposal, don't they? And what happened was, the city at one point owned the landfill. And they allowed MDC to dump into the landfill what they took out of, a portion of what they took out of the catch basins. The state took over the, what, about 10 years ago, eight years?
2015.
2015. The state took over ownership of the landfill. So consequently, the state's position was, you're gonna pay, no free lunch. So that's the bulk of the negotiation that we have. But I'm glad that Scott points out that the city has been doing a job of cleaning it up. When we were up there six months, eight months ago, you mentioned that it didn't look much better, so...
My next question, I hate to say, but it goes back to B-6D. And I've read this and read this, and I just want to be sure I understand it. Now, I'm not sure, Chris, if we're in, if we filed a lawsuit against DEEP yet or not. But if we have, or when we do, if I call up Commissioner Dykes and want to talk about an issue, maybe hunting, trapping, but nothing to do with MDC, I'm not sure that I'm okay. I think I'm okay.
You'll be okay. You'll be okay.
Okay.
Commissioner, do you have a hunting license?
Don't laugh, I, well, that's another story. It's tough to file when you've harvested a deer if you first didn't get your hunting license.
Harvested, what does that, what does that mean?
It's a nice word. That's it. And I think Chris mentioned too, that 2BK, and I'm not sure...
B-2K.
I know, okay. But I'm thinking we should have the appropriate committee look at that to maybe put that under a referral to Ethics and not to the board. So I'm not sure what the proper forum for that would be, but I'd like you, you as chair, to take that under consideration and maybe add it to whatever the appropriate agenda would be.
We've had that discussion.
Yeah, we can speak with Chairman Hoffman.
Right.
Government to get that moving. Thank you.
Rick?
Thanks, Commissioner Bush. I just wanted to make a comment to those of you who don't know that Lynbrook Road has been an ongoing project for many years, and most recently, there was a major sewer liner repair. And to report back that the MDC and the subcontractors that worked on the project were extremely professional. It was, it was a very big job with very heavy equipment every day for two, over two months, maybe almost three months. And the contractor did an excellent job of allowing flowing, the traffic to flow. And ultimately, the finished product was outstanding. The street is paved, and the neighborhood is back to normal. So I just want to, you know, say thank you to everybody who worked on that, and what a great job. Thanks.
Any further comments? Commissioner Taylor?
Yes, once again, I would like to give kudos to the Ethics Advisory Board. They were fair, they were careful, they listened, and basically, I have no beef with them in terms of the process. So I would not recommend that you go through this. But once again, they were, they did their job, and they are to be commended for that. Thank you.
Commissioner Salemmy?
I'd just like to, for those of you who get some of your news, at least, from the electronic world, the, there was an announcement this week that a bobcat was sighted near St. Francis Hospital. So that's in the city of Hartford. I don't know the last time a bobcat was sighted in the city of Hartford. But Scott will tell you that especially Hogback is like overrun with bears. There's so many bears out there, it's like Yogi must be the mayor of Hogback reservoir. But we also have bobcats all over our property in Northwest Connecticut as well. So it's a little scary to think that there's an animal as dangerous as a bobcat, and they're pretty dangerous in the city of Hartford. But for our, we still call them rangers, the guys that go out through the, you know, for our guys that go out there and have to, you know, go through the area on a regular basis, that's what's there, bears, bobcats, and other deer, or the hordes of deer, I'm sure, with ticks all over them, and, but I thought it was interesting that a bobcat, I don't know why, but he made it all the way, maybe he was trying to clean a catch basin.
Any further, Andy?
On that point, I understand that our conservation officers aren't allowed to carry bear spray, bear spray or anything, which I've just come back from Alaska, and you don't go out with...
We carry honey.
Yeah, right.
Honey, I see.
Those bears come in and they just ask you if you can go through their trash, through your trash.
Further comment, John? Commissioner Avedision, I'm sorry.
Scott, I just want to say I commend the MDC for the work they did finding that woman's ring. That was a really good, good story for the MDC, and they did an excellent job over and above. So that was, that was a good thing.
Yeah, thank you.
We've done that in the past.
Yes, we've done that in the past, and Ricky Fritson, who was one of our supervisors in the repair sewer department, a lady had lost her wedding ring in downtown Hartford in a catch basin. And I believe this was on a Sunday, and Ricky and his crews went out Monday morning and actually retrieved the ring from the catch basin. So it was, yeah, it's a good field story. Commissioner Beul said me a nice little email the night of the, the report on television, but... And then he delivered it to his, to our, to the woman's house on overtime. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But we have, you know...
We have time in the head.
MDC has tremendous, tremendous employees, so, yeah, it's great, it's great, it's a great story.
Including, if everybody can read it, the wonderful award for your Director of Engineering.
Yes, Susan Aggerelli just received, we... Yes, another award. Susan, Susan is, you know, she was working in engineering years and years ago, and then migrated away from the engineering department into the water treatment facilities. And I was just looking at statistics in 2003, kind of when she left, and our capital investment in 2003 was $15 million a year. We're doing $200 million a year. So a lot of our engineers moved out to the facilities, the wastewater treatment and the drinking water treatment facilities. Susan did a tremendous job out there building our infrastructure. I brought her back in 2015 to be the Director of Engineering. She just received the award from the Construction, the American Construction Institute for Owner of the Year. We all, Chris Stone, myself, and a bunch of staff, went to celebrate with her at the AquaTurf in Southington last week, two weeks ago. So we're very proud of Susan, and she's doing a great job with her staff, so, yeah, congratulations.
Any further comments? If not, the appropriate motion to adjourn is in order. Without objection, we stand adjourned.
I will, thanks for asking about it.